All right, we'll call to order the May 15th meeting of the Planning Commission. If we can start with roll call, please.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Moran.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan and Commissioner Yu asked to be excused.
All right, thank you. I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the April 17th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Does anybody have any edits they would like to propose?
No.
Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is the Council Liaison Report.
Chair Dennison, members of the Commission, I think I'll just give you a few highlights for our next council meeting so you know what's coming up. We're doing a presentation for our Library Bookmark Award winners. We're also going to have Civic Club there doing their annual grant presentation, which is always kind of cool. Public hearings, we're doing, taking a look at the fire hazard severity zone map adoption. That's pretty big. And among discussion items, we're going to be looking at the LA County Public Health Services presentation and a few other things, but that's, those are the highlights. That's all I got.
Great.
Any questions? Cool.
Thank you. Next up is the Consent, 2025 Annual Report for the Meadows at Bailey... Oh, I'm sorry. Before I do that, why don't we take community input? At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than three minutes to ensure an orderly and timely meeting. Next up is the 2025 Annual Report for the Meadows at Bailey Canyon. Does staff have a presentation?
Chair, staff does not have a presentation. It's a annual report that was in accordance with the Development Agreement Section 4M for the Commission to receive and file, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Do we take public comment on consents? I don't think so, right? Yeah, all right. So, does, is there a motion to accept the 2025 Annual Report for the Meadows at Bailey Canyon?
I'll make a motion to accept the report for the Meadows at Bailey Canyon as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up is a public hearing for the Municipal Code Text Amendment, MCTA 25-01, the Noise Ordinance Update. Does city staff have a presentation for us?
Yes, our Assistant Planner Huang will deliver the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting and sorry for the delay, Commissioners. Good evening. Tonight, we do have a public hearing item for the Municipal Code Text Amendment 25-01 for the Noise Ordinance Update. For some general background, the Noise Ordinance seeks to protect the residents of Sierra Madre from excessive, unnecessary, and unreasonable noises from all sources in the community. The current gaps in the existing Noise Ordinance includes no standards for enforcing or measuring noise levels and no baseline specifying ambient noise levels. In the previous Planning Commission meeting in April, RingCon consultants presented the amendments to the ordinance. And following his presentation, or their presentation, the Planning Commission discussed and directed staff to consider the following revisions to the proposed amendments. One, simplify exterior, simplify the exterior noise standards table. Two, harmonize construction and equipment use hours across relevant sections of the municipal code. Three, limit special events to only city-sponsored or city-affiliated events. Four, minimize the required noise level measurement duration. And lastly, quantify or eliminate the vibration section. The proposed amendments will include the following sections to be updated. Those that are marked in red are sections that have been revised and updated from the previous Planning Commission meeting. And a QR code is also available on screen to be scanned by anybody at home or anybody that's in the audience who would like to follow along with the drafted amendments. So moving along to the updates, the Planning Commission provided feedback on simplifying the exterior noise standards table to have noise level requirements that apply to all land use types and also differentiating those allowable levels in either day or evening time periods. In the table, the allowable equivalent continuous sound levels measured in 10 minutes is 60 DBA in the daytime and 50 DBA in the evening time with maximum noise levels of 80 and 70 DBA. Another component that was added were the C-weighted decibels, the DBC, that account for low frequency noises such as bass. And following the meeting, RingCon had researched and provided us with a comparison and conversion between DBA and DBC in which frequencies that dominate in the DBC level can be measured 10 decibels or 10 DBA above the DBA level. And you can see also in the table that the minimal, minimum noise level measurement was changed from 15 to 10 minutes, which we'll also go over in a later section, or later slide in the presentation. For context of noise levels for DBA, Caltrans uses the table that's presented on the screen to demonstrate the typical noise levels used in common outdoor and indoor activities in a scale that how humans perceive sounds in different frequencies. For example, a quiet urban daytime has a comparable DBA to a dishwasher in the next room at 50 DBA. For exemptions, the Planning Commission had provided staff with direction to harmonize the construction and equipment use hours across relevant sections of the municipal code and also to align the solid waste collection removal hours with our agreement with Athens Services. And staff was able to confirm and complete those revisions necessary to align throughout the code. And also with Section E was also to revise to limit the special events to only city-sponsored or city-affiliated events only. For noise level measurement criteria, RingCon consultants had recommended that at least a 10-minute measurement is completed for enforcement activities. So the previous one had 15 minutes, it was now reduced to 10. This aligns with the technical noise supplement to the traffic noise analysis protocol from Caltrans. And this also allows for a sufficient measurement duration while also still being, still carrying efficiency and enforcement as well. And lastly, for the vibration section, staff and RingCon had recommended striking this section due to the complex equipment needs and challenges in measuring and quantifying vibration. RingCon also provided that other agencies that do include vibration in their, in their ordinance that this is a rarely used or enforced portion of that, of their code. And other reasons would include that, that it's challenging to quantify as well. And with those following changes, staff recommends the Planning Commission hold a public hearing for the consideration of the Municipal Code Text Amendments to the Noise Ordinance, consider all testimony, and approve the Municipal Code Text Amendments pursuant to Planning Commission Resolution 25-07, recommending city council approve the subject Municipal Code Text Amendment by ordinance. With the alternatives, they, the Planning Commission may also approve with, approve the Planning Commission Resolution 25-07, recommending city council approve a Municipal Code Text Amendment by ordinance, or approve them, approve with modifications to the resolution, or continue the public hearing providing staff with direction. This concludes my presentation. On the dais, you should also have received a memo from RingCon consultants with the recommended enforcement methods and devices. And also if the Planning Commission would like to review the red line and strike ordinance, we can also display that on the screen for your review. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff or our experts who are here in the audience? I know, I, I had some, some questions. Did you have something? Go ahead.
No, we're not going to go kind of down.
We can. We'll probably do that when we flip, when we, when we bring it back.
That's fine, okay.
But if you had questions for staff?
Not yet.
Okay. This new, in 932-030, the table, it says the above daytime standards shall apply only to active outdoor use areas such as pool or outdoor courtyard. Does that mean, I mean, as I read that, it means that the daytime hours don't apply to anything else? So it's only the evening time hours that apply everywhere except for active outdoor use?
So that, that code section, Section B under 030, that, that was written from the previous drafted ordinance for when it was specified for hotels, motels, and commercial uses. So it being only aligned for outdoor uses, we could strike that for the, for the next...
I, I'm just trying to understand if, the way I'm reading it means, and maybe the city attorney can help with this, the way I'm reading it, it means that except for those uses, everywhere else goes by the evening time?
My first read of it also is such, and I don't recall what the previous version was, so I can't speak to that, but if that is the case, it would make sense to strike that, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Were there other questions for staff? I, I did have a question. So we had talked about harmonizing construction and other, other times, and I guess, were we not able to harmonize construction and powered equipment intended for residential areas? I think one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was, if somebody has a construction permit at the house next to me, they can start at 8:00 AM on a Sunday, but I can't run any kind of equipment on Sundays. So I guess, help me understand the nuance of the harmonization that happened.
Chair Dennison, so the power equipment is related to landscape equipments that was from another section, so this was borrowing the same hours from referencing back to that section. If we were going to align the power equipment for landscape uses to the construction, then we'll have to do a clean up or a change to the other section for, and went through the hearing probably with Natural Resources Commission.
But my interpretation is right, that right now, I can't do anything in the yard on Sundays, but a construction site next to me can? Is that right?
That's correct.
Am I understanding it correctly?
Yes, Chair, that's correct.
And that's consistent with the, the noise code, or the, the code that got adopted earlier?
That's correct.
Right, now, nobody can do work on Sundays that's powered? Like we can't mow our lawns pursuant to the code today?
With power equipment, that's correct.
Okay. And it's not defined, so what is a special city-sponsored or city-affiliated event?
We have our Director from Community Services, maybe we can invite him to elaborate on the city-sponsored versus city-affiliated events.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Ted Heger, I'm a Community Services Supervisor. In my realm, those city events would be July 4th, we have concerts in the park, we have concerts in the summer, movies, and then Melvin's and Troy's, so certain city-sponsored events that take place within the city, so a lot of those take place from my department, so that would be where I draw the line for those kind of events.
Okay, so like, this isn't a carve-out for gas-powered blowers to be used in Kirsten Court by a city contractor, right?
No, I don't believe, I don't believe, I always defer to clear, I don't believe so.
No, this is special for the events that host by the city.
The community, community-style events.
Okay, great, thank you.
And those are the carve-outs.
Any other questions for city staff, for the experts?
Not really.
All right. Thank you. I think at this time, we will turn it over to community input. At this time, anyone may address the Planning Commission concerning this specific agendized item. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting.
Chair, we have one speaker card from Ken Farthing.
Thank you, Chair Dennison, members of the Commission. I think first, we wanted to say from Alverno's standpoint, I'm representing Alverno as the Chair of the Board of Trustees. It's 200 North Michalinda in Sierra Madre. We appreciate the city's effort to simplify and update the noise standards, and we requested our noise consultant, Mr. Indy Savitala, who's Director at Residence Acoustics, to review the proposed amendments for their impact on both the school and the villa's private rental events. I think as the Commission's aware, the schools governed under Conditional Use Permit 21-03, which is a City Council Resolution 23-13, which have its own separate noise requirements in that CUP, and you're going to be looking at that later in the agenda. Also, the private rental events and filming are governed under a separate Conditional Use Permit for the Villa 22-03, and it's a City Council Resolution that was recently revised by the Council, it's 24-64. Now, Mr. Savitala will be presenting some information, we're hoping that if he goes over three minutes, that you'll let him kind of leak over a little bit. Again, because of the complexity of the issues, we just wanted to make sure that we got some dialogue going. Now, again, in terms of Section 93, 9.32.04, the exemptions, we applaud the city's exemption extended to all the schools in Sierra Madre for activities such as bands, athletics, school entertainment events. And that exemption is very common if you look at noise ordinances in the surrounding communities. We would like to get some clarification, it kind of dovetails into what the Chair was talking about, on what constitute a special event under the code section. It's not defined in your definition section of this chapter, and we think it would be helpful to understand what the school is anticipating in terms of what special events there would be at schools. The other clarification that we're looking for is in terms of the ambient noise levels that go above 60 decibels. That's Section 9.32.030E. And we understand that the noise limits for the villa will be reduced from 70 DBA to 60 DBA for the private events with a 5 DBA reduction when amplification is used such as music. And we have an extensive protocol in place for monitoring noise at the villa. We're going to need to work with staff and the Police Department to basically modify that monitoring program that we have when this ordinance is adopted. So we would really like to get direction from the Commission on how to establish the ambient noise level when the levels are exceeded by 60 decibels. Again, we appreciate your, the exemption for schools, we think that's a wise thing to do, but we do want to understand what special events are, you know, basically in the city's understanding. And then, we understand the noise limits will be lowered citywide, and we're going to work with the city to comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hi, my name is Indy Savitala, Director of Residence Acoustics, I represent Alverna Heights, I'm their acoustical consultant. Piggybacking on some of the comments that Ken Farthing made, it would be helpful to have some clarity as to the maximum noise levels. There's an 80 DBA maximum noise level and a DBC max noise level, and the definition at the beginning of the ordinance isn't as clear as to what constitutes a max, and more importantly, how that is enforced. I think citywide, that would be really helpful to understand. Special events for schools is really important, what constitutes a special event, and how the noise levels would be measured. When the ambient exceeds 60 is not clearly defined and is something that has to be made clear for everybody since certain parts of Sierra Madre during the daytime already exceed 60. And I think by definition, it says that that new noise level becomes the criteria. So Michalinda as an example, which can be between 65 and 70 during the day, and if you're out making noise, how do you determine that you are louder than what Michalinda is already, you know, producing as a noise source? So just pointing some of those things out, some clarity there would be really helpful. And lastly, enforcing the DBC part of the noise ordinance, I don't know if you guys have discussed that amongst yourselves, so I apologize now if it already has been discussed, but how the city plans to enforce measuring, reporting DBC, measuring and reporting DBA and max values would be helpful to know. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, then we will bring it back for deliberation. Who'd like to start?
I guess I'll start. So, yeah, I, I, I have a couple of the same questions, how, how some of this will be. I mean, I don't want to just make something that's unenforceable. With the DBC and, and everything, it's a little confusing, honestly. Does the city even own any device like that? Sorry, to go back, but...
Chair Dennison, Commissioner, Ringcom did provide us a recommendation for Noise Enforcement Method and Devices memo, and it's on areas for you to review. So, they are some type of examples of brand and devices that was recommended, and those devices can output that DBA and DBC with reading, but they cannot do it all at once, so you have to switch between DBA and DBC.
Right.
I guess the part we didn't really talk about, and I see that the Chief's here, so maybe we ought to ask him to come up and talk to us about actual enforcement of this.
That would be, thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. So, as far as enforcement at, today's topic, is it about pre-planned events or non-planned?
Yep.
Events?
The noise ordinance takes care of all noise across the board, so pre-planned or non-preplanned. This is pre-planned events, other than, like, as it's contemplated, the Fourth of July Parade would be excluded from this, because it's one of the city-affiliated events, but if the calliope's at the art festival get too loud, that would be something that's might be considered, but your Friday night, Saturday night parties are going to be considered, so anytime there's noise that exceeds those limits, this would be the code under which you would be able to enforce.
So, the way usually we enforce, thank you for the question, we enforce the code, is first, warning, second, it would be a citation, or you can give multiple warnings, it's at the officer's discretion, depending on the event, most of the time, we use discretion, meaning we give a warning to reduce the level of noise, and then from there, it's progressively, we move into a citation.
So, one of the challenges I always have about code is converting code to actual tactical deployment, and the way the code is written, you would have to put a sound monitoring device on a tripod for 10 minutes, get that reading, before you were able, under the code, to go write a ticket. Is that practical, in your opinion?
Yeah, and then maybe you have to go to, if a DBA was fine, then you'd have to do another 10 minutes on DBC.
Or you have two years, they're about $600.
Right, so we'd have one in every car.
So, thank you for the question, so that has, we're discussing those matters currently with our other city attorney, Alex Giragosian, so what we're trying to look, what is reasonable within an hour at Alverno to get a reading?
Yeah, this is, this is not Alverno, sorry.
Right, no.
Anywhere we go, what is reasonable? We don't have a device here, we'd have to purchase a device.
Yeah.
Is it really reasonable to sit there for 10 minutes? Probably not, however, it, based on this, we would have to literally stand there and look at the DCB or DBC to ensure that we're within compliance. So, we've been discussing this with Alex as to what's reasonable, I think if it's just a call for service, not related to a special event, I think it's, it could probably be resolved through a warning, and then possibly a citation, mostly a warning, however, it's something that we have to debate. We're still in discussion with the city attorney, what's feasible to stand there for 10 minutes? If we get the second call, are we going to stand there for another 10 minutes? I don't know. I don't know what it's going to look like, that's something that the city attorney and myself are discussing as to what's reasonable.
Okay. Any other questions for the Chief? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I see that...
Oh, I do have a question for the Chief, hi, sorry.
He needs the steps, it's okay.
There we go, helping you. I don't know if you got to this in your discussions, but, or, do you feel like this is the code that you would need to know the DBA prior to giving a warning, or is the fact that someone was annoyed enough to give a warning?
Do we need the DBA, I think what you're asking is, do we actually need the reading to enforce it?
Not quite, do you need the reading to give the warning? I would imagine you would need the reading to give the citation, because that's more of a legal thing, but a warning, is the reading that you need to actually sit there for the 10 minutes just to give a warning?
Thank you for the question, that's a no. So, any disturbance, regardless of decibel reading, we can enforce, and it's regardless of time.
Yeah.
Most people think it's between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, that's not true, it's 24 hours a day. If there's noise, whether it be, you know, someone talking, dog barking, lawn mower, it's all equal.
Yeah.
If it disturbs the peace, we can enforce, and we don't need a reading.
Yeah, so then you can give a warning, and then it, do you need a, it seems like with this code, though, you would need a reading to give a citation?
With this code, yes, absolutely. We would have to stand there for 10 minutes.
To give that citation?
To record, yes.
It is my interpretation that most times, things are resolved with a warning, is that match with your experience?
Yes, thank you for the question, but yes, we have, first of all, we don't have too many parties here in the city.
Yeah.
That exceed that limit, every once in a while, we'll get a complaint, but most, yes, they have been resolved with a warning.
Yeah.
We have very cooperative citizens in our city.
So, my interpretation of what he said was that, like, 98% of the time, they're not even going to have to do a reading, unless they need to do a citation?
Either that, or the city would want us to record.
Yeah, if we had some reason because of, you know, an agreement we've already specified with the school or otherwise, to do readings.
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Perfect. So, it feels premature to pass a code without understanding what the enforcement action that is being contemplated between the Police Department and city attorney.
Yeah.
So, I think that we should probably continue this, but let's talk about if there's anything in here that we want changed before the next time we see it. For, so, I guess, should we start flipping pages? Does that make the most sense?
Yeah, I would love to just kind of go down it, if possible. As far as the, where are we at, what declaration? As far as the definitions, I think it would be good to add something, whatever we're calling city, what is it, city-associated or city...
The city events?
City events, basically.
Like define, like, July 4th.
City-sponsored or city-affiliated should be defined.
And I think, I mean, while we're talking about that, I think it's a good point that it is undefined what the special events at schools is.
Right.
Awesome, probably even more of an important distinction.
Yeah, that's in 9.32.04O exemptions. In Section A, not constituting special events conducted on the grounds, so understanding what that definition is. And then, I guess we should have a conversation, and maybe I'm the only one that this bothers, but the idea that we, that we're not allowed
Right.
to do any landscaping on Sunday, I think may have been an unintended consequence of the code that was previously written.
Yeah.
And so, we might want to recommend a change to that code at the same time.
I agree, and we clean this up.
People should be able to mow their lawns on Sundays.
I mean, I don't know if I can remember this myself, if I'm doing construction, I can do it between these times, if I'm doing, mowing my lawn, I can do, like, I don't know, it's really kind of confusing, if we could maybe go the other way instead of, I mean,
Sure, we could.
7:00 to 7:00 daily.
Or can we just say daytime, and then define daytime somewhere?
Just day, yeah, yeah, but we have daytime, the problem is seven, we don't want people mowing their lawn at 9:30 at night.
Well, I don't...
We could have like a 7:00 to 7:00 or...
Business hours, we can have daytime and business hours, or something?
As it's written right now, the daytime hours that are in there only refer to the Y. That's the only location in town that is a commercial pool, we don't have a hotel with a pool.
Oh, right.
Right, and I don't think that apartment pools fall into that category, if I'm reading it. I guess apartments would fall into that area as well. So, other than the Y and apartments that have pools, the daytime standard doesn't really mean anything.
Oh, we're taking that thing out, that, oh yeah, we didn't get there yet, right? So...
We're skipping around.
Okay, so, yeah, getting rid of B, B doesn't make any sense, under the, that makes, yeah.
Well, I guess, if it was put in there for a reason, maybe we can, somebody can explain to us why it was put in there?
We can invite our Community Services Supervisor to give us maybe some insights regarding the Y swimming pool, have you been receiving any complaints regarding noise?
Sorry, my eyes weren't as great, I needed to read the thing, okay. I have not received any complaints, and I don't believe they do programming after a certain hour at night, I want to say they close at 7, I shouldn't know off the top of my head, but I want, you know, they not have any evening events since I've been here, I've been about a year now, and if they do those kind of events, they will let us know, you know, because there'd be some kind of permit happening around it, if it's a large, large enough event, so, I don't think, otherwise, I've not received any kind of complaints about it.
Okay. And, not for you, thank you. Was this from the legacy code?
I think.
This clause?
Yes, that was carried over from the previous.
I think it used to apply when we had residential and commercial hospitals and...
Yeah, so then I think I agree, we can probably just strike that section. And by striking it, that'll make it apply everywhere in the city, is that right, Mayor City Attorney?
As far as I'm reading it at this time, that's correct.
Okay. And to the point about E, below that, in the event the measured ambient noise levels exceeds any of those, then it shall be increased to reflect said ambient noise level, does that mean that either the ambient noise level, so it would be the lower of the threshold, the upper threshold, or the ambient noise level? Is that what that means?
I believe this was to reflect when there is a planned event, when we take that ambient reading before the event starts, if that already is above 60, then that's allowing for that kind of reflecting, like, the public comment was saying, if it already happens at a noisy time of day, that that becomes the new threshold.
That becomes the new threshold?
At least that's my understanding of it.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood the way it's written, so if the threshold is 60 and the ambient noise is 62, the new threshold is 62 for that period?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and this gets into the nuances of enforcement, which are the consultant brought up as well, in terms of how do you determine what that ambient noise was before the event, unless you pre-arrange to do so?
Yes, for spontaneous events.
Yeah, for spontaneous events, or even planned events that you don't have, you know, the obligation to take a noise reading for, so there may be... Like, if you get a complaint on a planned event that's at, like, 12:00 PM across the street from, I don't know, the elementary school when it's letting out, or something like that, then the ambient noise at the elementary school when it's letting out is going to be quite loud, your planned event will also be
Quite.
louder in that case. I don't mind that, but it's just like, how do you determine what the ambient noise was before, if you get a complaint?
Why do we need to raise it? If we have that? Why do we need that at all? I mean, if, I know they've mentioned, yeah, I think, you know, Michelinda, if you're standing on the curb at Michelinda during the day, you might get levels over 60 or so, but if, you know, they're going to be varying as cars go by, but that noise level isn't the same, just say, not easy, Alverno, but you're here, so I see you there, if the, if, it's not going to be 65 or 70 at the villa, it's going to be, I mean, that's pretty far away from the street.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
So, why do we need to raise the amount of noise we can make at the villa due to the noise on the street? I just doesn't, I mean, if the noise at the villa was 70 dB because of whatever, and you couldn't hear music if it was 60, but I don't see why we would have that problem.
Well, this isn't specific to the villa.
No, but anywhere.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of enforcement, so imagine you have the city Fourth of July Parade, so everywhere's noisy, and at the same time, you're having your own, I know, I'm going to get there, just wait, at the same time, you're having your own party across the street, a birthday party, that's super loud, and your neighbors call to complain about your super loud party, and the officer gets there to measure the complaint, and he or she measures, I don't know, 75 dB, right, which is a violation, but you say, hey, well, that noise is all from the city parade, kind of thing, the ambient noise from the city parade. So, it's a very niche case, but I think that's what this is meant to cover, that there's an existing ambient noise that's not your fault, that if they measure it, they get the effect of the ambient noise, so they can't determine whether it's you or the ambient noise to do the citation for. I think it's such an edge case that I feel like we could strike it, but that's my interpretation of why it's there, out of like fairness, if the noise isn't your fault, it's only if you exceed what's around you that it's a problem.
I just see it as a problem, because if it was contested that, you know, the noise at the street or something, it just seems like kind of a loophole to me, that we're going to, every time we have it, if there's noise that's higher, it's going to be...
It's a loophole, yeah.
Yeah, great, I think we're all in favor of striking it, so why don't we just strike?
Yeah, it's a very edge case of like, to be extra fair, but like, I don't think that we need it.
So, we've struck B, we've struck E, while our red pens are hot, what else are we looking at? While our red pens are hot, what else are we looking at? Uh, as we continue to go down, the next one was nine thirty-two oh four oh A, which we said will define special events for the school carve-out. And so, let's talk construction and powered equipment.
Do we have a, on redlined one, so we can just, I'm having a hard time reading these things. I can't, I'm used to reading these in Word and being able to turn all that off.
Turn it off, it is in Word right now.
Okay, thank you. At least for a minute.
So, C and D is what we're, what we're talking about. And D, we inherited from a different code.
Yeah, that was fine, can we just go up to C? There we go.
So, I think the construction permit, I mean, these hours are from what's allowed on permits for construction. So-
Yeah, okay.
This would be a significant change if we were to, to change that, and it would probably have to be only a forward-looking one for permits that are established after a certain date, right?
I, I think this one's good numbers, or good hours. To me.
Seven to seven.
You know, I don't know, if I went to work and I worked till five and I got home at six, I want to mow my lawn. You have a little bit of time, right now, we're shutting it off at five. I mean, literally, you can mow your, if you have a nine to five job, you can mow your lawn from, on Saturday. If you miss Saturday, you have to wait a week.
I guess my whole comment is I feel like seven seems a little early to start construction. I don't know, I usually try to like, not make a lot of noise before eight.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm good with seven. I think, I think seven o'clock construction is pretty common, like, everywhere, like,
Makes sense.
outside of Sierra Madre.
Yeah.
So, if we go with seven to seven daily except Sundays, which is ten to six, is that something we think we could recommend to the Natural Resources Committee to update their code to conform?
I do.
Yeah, I think since, if we're going to continue this anyway, we might as well do that.
Well, I don't think we are allowed to change, well, what's the other, what section is the other code?
Recommend that, I'm not saying that we change it.
I believe it's chapter eight.
And is it in, within our purview to recommend changes to chapter eight?
I'd have to consult with Alex on exactly where that boundary lies on what we're able to recommend to them.
I mean, we can certainly recommend that the city council consider it.
Sure.
Yeah.
If it, if it's something that falls in our purview, we'd love to take a crack at it so that we can conform across all the codes and you don't get bounced from code to code and have discrepancies within the code, right? We're always trying to make sure that we clean that stuff up as we see it. So, if it's in our purview, we'd recommend changing it for this, for the next version. If it's not, then we'll recommend to city council to ask natural resources to do so.
And I think that's a good way to handle it with the either or there.
Chair, I just want to make a comment that construction is project-based, so it has a defined time of construction, like where project starts and project ends. But, um, long equipment, it's more like repetitive, weekly, daily. So, maybe that was the consideration back then, that it was a little bit more restrictive than construction itself.
Yeah, I think that construction takes years, depending on the size of the project, right? There's a house being built near me and they're very respectful, I do not hear that, that framing gun until seven o'clock on the dot. But, I, if everybody's up because of the framing, why can't I be up to go mow my lawn? So, I guess that, that's kind of the, the, that would be my input as a counter to that. But yeah, no, I, you're, you're right that it is ongoing and that this section, I do understand that.
Can we go down a little bit, just so we have the, the end on there? Oh, wait, just a, no, just a little bit. I'm trying to read this last sentence. I've seen more residential, hotel, motel, hospital things going on, so I don't, I don't know what that's for. Can you go up just a little, so we can read the, oh, okay. So, because between the hours of seven and ten daily except Sundays and holidays, when the exemption shall apply between ten and six, construction, alternation, or repair activities which are authorized by a valid, I think we just take all this, just valid city permit.
Yeah, we don't need like all those-
We don't need all this other stuff, I don't think.
Unless there's a reason for it.
Do we, I mean-
I think the idea is that if you're doing-
I, but that's all encompassing, it's residential.
Basically, it's anywhere.
I guess it's not, it, I guess it's-
Like, commercial is excluded from that, right?
It's not commercial, yeah, but-
Well, then, we could just say non-commercial.
Yeah, we're taking commercial out of this.
Well, we can't say non-commercial because there's also the manufacturing, there's a bunch, commercial refers to one of the zones, so we'd probably want to be a little more-
We took those zones out though, didn't we? For noise reasons.
We, we changed, we made it universal.
Right.
And so, this basically is creating another carve-out, I think is what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand, make this universal. Because it looks like this is only supposed to, this is to apply to a valid city permit construction, not me and my hammer on a Saturday morning. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I-
It says a valid permit.
I think, I think you're right. This addition was from the, the team at Rincon, correct?
Yeah, they might have just copied and pasted.
Do we know why this was, this section was added? In, uh, section C, construction, do we know why they added the list of residential, hotel, motel, hospital, school, church, museum, library, public park, or recreational land use? It's marked as an addition, that's why, I thought maybe Rincon did it.
Oh, is that yellow? It's an addition, okay.
Chair, if I may, the, the section does exist already under nine dot thirty-two dot oh six oh, subsection C.
Okay, so it's not actually an addition, it's marked as an addition in our version, but not actually an addition to the code?
The, the changes you're reviewing are amendments to that section to keep in line with the construction hours.
Okay, then let's just strike it. If that's not from the, if Rincon didn't insert that, then let's just-
Remove residential motel.
Everything from at to does, I think is what you, is what is being recommended.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like us to consult with Rincon before we make that change, to check that there was not a reason?
That would be great.
Okay.
I guess Planner Wolf saw that it was in the code, so we assumed that it wasn't an insertion by Rincon. But if it is, let's understand why. So, that brings us to D. Are we recommending conforming those hours to the construction hours? Or do we want a unique set of hours for repetitive use in residential areas?
I think it could be, it could be cleaned up a little bit too. Because we have residential zone in there, and again, we're taking zones out, we have commercial zone in there. So, we just make it, yeah, it's-
After, anything after the foregoing.
So, not with it. Landy, landscaping equipment, and then within, I think, within-
Actually, I think we want to keep the within any residential zone, because this is an exclusion. So, we're saying in the commercial zone, you have to live by the other standards, right?
Which other standards?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a better question. It says it'll be, so we may have removed this from being in the commercial, because we got rid of the commercial.
It says noise generated by power, the last sentence says, within any commercial zone shall be regulated by other sections of this chapter. Didn't we take out the commercial zone?
That's what I'm saying, that we may have neutered this.
Right.
Yeah. So, do we-
I think it's just the times.
So, do we even, is this already covered somewhere else?
No, we're saying that we used to, we had that commercial zone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And now that we've removed it, the reference probably doesn't apply.
I mean, it, it just-
If we're going to make the two codes conform anyway, we could maybe merge C and D and just add
Yeah, I think, well-
construction with a permit or leaf-
How, we just make it landscape, landscaping. Like how C is titled construction and B is titled emergencies. I think D would just be titled landscaping. And, not, and then notwithstanding any other provision of the chapter, I don't, is that nine thirty-two oh seventy still even exist?
So, I think that the reason that it's not just called landscaping is that it's, you know, if you're doing construction on your home, without this provision, you wouldn't be able to do it, right?
Oh, that's true. So-
So, I think that this is, that, I think that's why it's drawing that difference between
Okay.
true construction and, or permitted construction
Okay.
and residential areas. But I think what we're saying is, we're not really, we're proposing not contemplating a difference between construction permit and residential. If we're conforming all the times, then there's really not going to be a difference.
Right, right, because- Right, because, I mean, while the title does say powered equipment intended for repetitive use in residential areas, that's not really what the thing, it just says no person shall operate a leaf blowing machine or other landscaping equipment. It doesn't have nail guns, doesn't, it's, I mean, that's pretty specific. So, yeah, can we broaden that? Construction one, because-
Well, yeah, we, I guess we struck part of it, or some, somehow, part of it got struck. So, maybe we reinstate any other machinery, equipment, or other mechanical or electrical device, or any hand tool which creates a loud ruckus or loud ruckus noise, because impulsive is, is under a different definition.
Where is that? Sorry.
That's section D, it was, if you're looking, it won't show on that version, because that's the
Oh, okay.
version. So, it's reinstating this section that starts, or any other. I'm, I'm not opposed to having it be two sections, in case at another time, somebody says, or even city council could come back and say, you know, for residential, we want this, but for-
I think it has to be two sections, because the, the construction says, you get like an exception up to eighty. And for the leaf blowing, you don't get an exception up to eighty. What it is, is just saying like, instead of the daytime hours, which are longer, we're like shortening the daytime hours for that leaf blowing stuff. So, I think they do have to be, I, I was
Yeah, let's-
not catching that before, but they do have to be separate, but I think we can simplify the language.
I think, I mean, I, yeah, we don't need to call out lawnmower, leaf blower, like, every single thing. I think landscaping equipment.
It's not just for landscaping equipment.
No, but, so, no person shall operate landscaping equipment, and then you just keep going, or other mechanical or electrical device, or any hand tool which creates a loud ruckus or impulsive noise. So, it's part of the old.
Yeah, so I think we should leave out impulsive, because I think impulsive is part of a definition of another
Oh, okay.
noise. But I, I think, so, we're saying no person shall operate
So, I guess we got to kind of-
a machine or other landscaping equipment, or any other machinery, equipment, or other mechanical or electrical device. So, we should leaf-struck so-
Leaf blowing machine need to be different.
We should strike leaf blowing machine or
Yeah.
Actually, strike other as well.
No, 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 she's operate landscaping equipment. Can we see it with the changes? Okay, there's those words. So, operate-
So, what I was saying, what I was proposing is no person shall operate a machine or other landscaping equipment, or any other machinery, equipment, or other mechanical through to ruckus or noise, striking only impulsive. You guys will figure out how to get noise back in, right? I think that's all we're saying. The rest of that looks right.
Yeah, we just type it again, it'll be all right.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
And we're recommending conforming those hours
A machine.
to the construction hours?
Do we need the, the word machine? Shall operate a machine or or do we need the word other then? Because other landscaping equipment, we haven't called out any landscaping equipment yet. I could use machine if we get rid of other. Shall operate a machine or landscaping equipment, or any other mechanical, electrical device.
Mechanical landscaping equipment shall operate.
Oh, any, oh, powered.
Powered mechanical, yeah, powered landscaping.
Because I guess
Sure.
I should be able to use my pruning chairs. Yeah, however you think those words go best, that's fine with me.
And we're agreeing that we should conform those hours to the construction hours?
I believe so.
I think that's good because then if city council decides to, to trim that, those hours, they're, they're still set up too. We don't need to, we don't need to create a definition that then they have to come back and undo. This way they can change it at, at that level. So then the other thing I think you mentioned, Commissioner Simcock, was something about DBC?
Yeah. I don't think it was on this, though.
No. I, I think that was the last of the check, of the sections that were changed for us.
Oh, we have. E, D, wait. I had a couple more.
Oh, you have more, like you have some changes on the.
Oh, like for the, yeah, for the city sponsored ones? So is, can we read that? Can you switch it so it's just reading? Thanks. So we have the, at the bottom, we have the the whole GBA, DBC, ambient noise levels thing. We, we got rid of it, we got rid of. To me, this part of this, the whole redo was to get rid of anything that had something where we were going over an ambient noise level. So we, that's why we had the assumed ambient noise levels. So with respect to amplified sound, that whole section, do we need that whole section?
That feels like something that the consultant would have put in because.
So this would be something that could be measured because it's a special city sponsored or city affiliated. This is not a spontaneous one, so if it's going to be a problem, they can measure it in advance. So this is one that's measurable. Though I doubt I see the city enforcing this on themselves.
But that, it just doesn't seem necessary to me.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want, you're proposing striking.
Striking that section, yeah, we already have, we have a limit. It's seventy B eight, DBA, LEQ over ten minute period.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
If it's over our typical threshold because it is a city sponsored event, I think we had heard previously that there had never been any complaints of city events.
Right.
This was just allowing some leeway, but if it has never come up, I don't see it being an issue striking it. I just do think that having quantifiable standards is never like a bad thing per se, but.
We have it there in the seventy, though, we're just kind of striking the DBC part, which I think just makes it a little more.
And I think the DBC was trying to capture some of the vibration aspects that are otherwise hard to enumerate, but.
Which would already be at ninety, DBC for that time period.
So we're done?
So we already have a fallback in the regular code.
Okay, G, did anyone change?
I, I, sorry to go back to D, but the, the last part is giving me a little bit of difficulty. The foregoing prohibition where it creates, it calls out the commercial zone. Noise generated by powered equipment within a commercial zone shall be regulated by other sections of this chapter. Didn't we remove the other sections of the chapter that had commercial?
Okay, let's strike it.
Yeah.
Changes to F? Nope, can't change that one. G? They just conformed to the contractual hours of Athens.
They're, they're around my house about six thirty in the morning, so.
File a complaint.
Now, G looks great.
And I think that was the end of the areas that were updated for this version, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Any other comments before they take this back?
I think the only other change may have been deleting nine thirty two oh nine oh about vibration, which is.
Oh, right.
Oh, so they came back and recommended just completely striking that section?
We felt after discussing enforcement that if it's unenforceable, it should be struck.
Fair enough. Objections?
None.
Great. Any more guidance you would like from us on this before you take it back?
Chair, we don't have any question. I think we have enough directions to bring it back.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate all the work that, that's been done on this. So do we need a motion to continue this? So I'd look for a motion to continue this to, well, it doesn't, it wasn't.
For further direction.
For further direction.
I'll make a motion to continue this, this public hearing for, or sorry, for the noise ordinance update for further correction.
Correction seconded.
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you. I know, exciting stuff. Next up is a discussion on the annual review of conditional use permit twenty one dash zero three for Alverno Heights Academy twenty twenty one master plan update. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Chair, yes, we have a presentation for you. So the planning commission will be conducting the annual review for the master plan conditional use permit for Alverno Heights Academy master plan update as required by general condition number eight. As you know, that Alverno resides on a twelve acre campus as one of the largest school sites within the city bounded by Mitchell Linda to the west, Grandview to the north, Wilson Street to the east, and Highland Avenue to the south. The city council approved the master plan in twenty twenty three and the planning commission amended the conditions in twenty twenty four, allowing the extension of the modular classrooms. And conditional number eight require that the, the planning commission to hold an annual review for the master plan as a discussion item since there is no modification request by Alverno Heights Academy. And all the mitigation measures and the student body capacity remains the same at four hundred student enrollment. And as for the modular classroom, even though the commission approved, granted the extension, the modular classroom was removed in September twenty twenty four. Alverno also hosts a annual neighbors meeting with, with the neighboring residents on February twenty seven, twenty twenty five. Attendees including the Alverno administration board of trustees, city staff, and six other local residents. So in that meeting, we addressed issues for the villa rental and also the master plan updates. Alverno discussed the removal of the portable classrooms. Neighbor discussed about the pedestrian noise around the campus. Talk about school traffic, alternate, alternatives to maybe modify the traffic flows. And also they discussed about a special event at the school where the, there's vehicle idling prior to seven AM. Alverno also received positive, positive feedback from the residents regarding the landscaping improvement along Highland Avenue, which was completed and now they are under construction for the sports court as well. At that time, we also discussed calls for services as a requirement for the annual review. The, the commission asked the police department to provide calls of services and I'll turn it over to Chief Bariantos to go over the calls of services related to the school only, not related to the VILS U P.
Thank you again. So during this period, and we're talking March first of twenty twenty four through April thirtieth of twenty twenty five, it shows, and we're not going to call them, they're not calls for service, there's a hundred and forty two cat events. What that means, it includes calls for service or some sort of documentation of officers taking activity at the school is the best way to describe it. So for example, of those hundred and forty two, thirty four are considered logs, meaning there was an event, a preplanned event at Alverno. And they call so that there's a contact phone number in the event there's a complaint for noise. So thirty, of the hundred and forty two, thirty four are those. And then there's about nine complaints related to the special events out of the hundred and forty two. However, those that are not, we have seventy six of those hundred and forty two that are just either extra patrols, traffic enforcement at the school. So it's officer initiated, not a call for service. We went there on our own because we got a complaint regarding traffic. Or we were just doing extra patrol when the kids were either coming in or coming out from school. So out of those, there's twenty three that actually stood out. Six of those are for noise. And of those six, one was a movie detail that there was a complaint. One was a complaint for singing, and I believe in one of the meetings, there was the kids that were singing that somebody complained about. There was two for noise, and these are all, they were actually school events that were going on with the kids. One was music and another one was a PA system in regards to a, a, a school event. Those are the six only noise complaints. There was three for trespassing. Of those three, one was a skateboarder, one was a woman who was taking pictures of, photographs of the kids. And the other one was a person who was on the property that shouldn't have been there. The suspicious activity was the same, too. One was a suspicious vehicle, suspicious person. And I can't recall what the third one was, the special details was neighborhood watch. There was one where we painted, repainted all the curves and extended the distance of the red curves. So that was one special detail. There was one where we had a actual complaint of traffic where we did a special detail there. And then we had a fourth one that was actually a movie detail. It doesn't mean there was a complaint, it was just there. And then two calls wildlife, and then we have five others. The five others, one was a complaint for tree trimming. A citizen called for tree trimming. The other was two vehicle stops, so realistically, it's officer initiated where they stopped a couple cars. One was an alarm call at the, at the premise. Illegally parked vehicle, however, there's no significant trend or pattern where we could say there's any issue or concern, it's a school with kids. So as far as the activity, there's nothing really concerning regarding any of these events, either routine patrols or a minor, there's very few calls for service and only six related to noise, obviously. That concludes, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
No, that sounds great, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
So this evening, staff is recommending that the planning commission may receive and file the annual report by determining that Alverno Heights Academy has met the conditions or determining that Alverno Heights Academy has not met the conditions and requests the director to agendize for a public hearing or continue the annual review and provide directions to the applicant and staff. I would like to invite Alverno Board of Trustees to, to deliver a presentation that they have prepared for the planning commission. And there's also a progress report that was provided by Alverno Heights that is on the dais for you.
Thank you, Chair Dennison, and members of the commission. Make sure we do this the right way, right? I'm going to have the same issue you guys. Again, thank you, I just, we have a brief presentation. The outline, we'll talk a little bit about the neighborhood meeting, the status of the modulators, the status of the sports court, traffic and circulation noise, and then the calls for service. So as the staffs indicated, you're required to schedule a public hearing if you believe that we violated one or more of the conditions of the city council resolution. The resolution also requires that the director meet with Alverno if there's an alleged violation and give us sufficient time to develop and implement a corrective action plan. During this past year, we've not been informed of any alleged violations by staff. The neighborhood meeting was, we felt was well attended by the neighbors. We also want to thank the city staff. They come all the time, I know it's inconvenient for them. And also Commissioner Simcock attended, we appreciate his attendance as well. I think it's good to meet the neighbors and have a discussion with the school and get a feel for kind of what's happening around the area. And then obviously, we spent some time talking about the sports court traffic, the other issues that Claire had mentioned. And then your, the meeting notes are included as exhibit C. You have those if you have questions. So that's just a rendering of the sports courts. I have some pictures later on that show the, the current status of construction. The courts were approved by the city council, resolution twenty three oh three. And they were basically, the two were a trade off because we lost the use of the Mitchell Linda lot. You know, the commission had approved the Mitchell Linda lot for athletics, but it was appealed by one of the neighbors. And as part of that appeal with the council, we needed additional sports courts, so we ended up with two on the south end of the campus. It's a major capital project, it was significant investment, I'll, I'll go through that. We submitted a design review application in April of this year and it was approved in June and the building permits were then issued. and it was approved in June and the building permits were then issued. We went out to bid and we had three contractors bid. And Courtney Construction, we ordered the bid to. Courtney had done the improvements of the athletic field, the multipurpose field we have now. Did an excellent job with that. And currently rough grading is completed. Retaining walls are substantially complete and they're starting to install fence posts. Also the drainage basin and walkway are in rough grade right now. We anticipate they'll be completed this month. Final grading and fencing and court surface paving in June. And then we've got some court painting and final drainage to do in July. And then we'll be working with city staff on installation of landscaping, July, August. Currently, the cost of construction is at $461,000. And we originally had anticipated about $323,000 in construction, but the costs just keep escalating. And so basically by December, we were at 461. That does not include soft costs, which engineering permits, plan check, equipment for the courts. And then obviously landscaping, we haven't priced out yet. And we had a two-year capital campaign to raise the funds for the project. And we'll, we'll provide the city with the final costs when the courts are completed. This is a picture that was taken on Tuesday. You can see the stockpile there. That's going to go back to compact behind the retaining walls, which are currently being waterproofed. But the rough grading substantially completed. You can see there, they're installing the waterproofing fabric behind the retaining walls. And then the fill material will go back into there. This is our rough drainage pond. It's actually working. It caught some rain. That will be, if you're familiar with the drainage pond we put in for the modulators, it'll be improved very similar to that. So it's not going to look anything like that. It's going to be totally improved, except for a soft bottom with landscaping. Traffic and circulation, we continue to work with neighbors in the city as needed. The painting of the red curbs on Michelinda, which the chief mentioned, that's substantially improved the visibility and the functioning of that intersection of Michelinda and Highland. There was a neighbor, we've had this concern in the past. When the, we think the city of Pasadena removed the crosswalk on Michelinda. We don't believe the city of Sierra Madre did, but they've expressed concern about that crosswalk being removed. We can't stop parents from parking on the west side of Michelinda and walking across at the, you know, it's not a marked crosswalk, but there's still, you can still cross there legally. And then there was a question regarding the use of the Wilson Gate during the school day. The campus is secured and locked at 8:10. And our security gate with the cameras and our security system is on Wilson. And that's where students, visitors, and deliveries enter after the school is locked down. Just some pictures of the red curbing extends pretty far north, probably a good 40 feet from Highland and Michelinda. You can see the, the sign of the school there. On the south side, it doesn't quite go down to the driveway of the house that's on the corner. And there is also red curbing installed, as you can see on Highland, east of Michelinda. We believe it's working very well. There was a concern expressed regarding noise from the school's Christmas holiday event. It was on a Saturday and there are refrigeration truck, it's a local vendor that you guys use. We use them too, and they basically, they do snow for the kids. And they showed up before our contract specified, parked on Michelinda before seven o'clock. And they were running their refrigerator unit on the back, you know, on the trailer part of the, their rig. And they couldn't really shut it down. And we opened the gates to try to get them into the campus and once we found out about it. So we'll continue to work with the vendors. We don't want to disturb the neighbors. I know it was a Saturday and it was prior to seven. As the chief noted, there were six calls. I, I was working off of the spreadsheet that's in the staff report. I had five calls for service. And there was a call for filming. I just want to remind the commission that filming is regulated under separate, separate permits. It's really not part of the school. So there were noise calls on the gala, which is our big fundraiser for the year. We had a parent social and then we had what we call our spring fling. There were two calls. And those were during, I think about in the late, early evening. So those, I just kind of summarized kind of the chief's opinion that there's really no concern specific to Alverno's operations. We like to call them our informal neighborhood watch. It's our neighbors. They keep a pretty good eye on the school, which is good. They also watch it on weekends. And there were two calls related to wildlife, coyote and I think bobcat. Those were called in by neighbors. That's great. There are some suspicious activities that were called in by the neighbors. One was our cleaning crew and that was sorted out pretty quickly. We also had some trespassers, as the chief indicated, and some skateboarders. There was also a false alarm. There was a, a call for service for the neighborhood meeting. I, I think, I don't know what that is, but. And then there's basically noted in the CAD system, the curb painting. And then there was some tree trimming that occurred, I believe it was on a Saturday, about a half hour before the city ordinance code. And we basically shut that down. So again, we appreciate the time devoted to the annual review. We believe we comply with the terms of the conditional use permit. And we give you our word that we'll continue to work with the city and the neighbors. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Done.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other presentations?
No, that concludes our presentation.
Okay. Any questions for staff or the applicant? All right. At this time, anyone may address the planning commission on this specific agendized item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting.
Chair, there's one speaker card received from Ken Farcey.
That's, that was for my presentation.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
All right. I guess we'll bring it back for deliberation. Just so everybody's clear, I know that this is maybe the first time that some of the commissioners have seen this. There's two separate reports that we originally received annually. One for the villa and its activities and one for the school. And this was the one for the school, not the one for the villa. And subsequent to that, the city council took over hearing the villa. So we no longer hear the, the villa reports. Is that right? Or has, did that get referred back to us this year?
Chair Dennison, yes. The city council has referred back the villa S U P to the planning commission.
Okay. In October timeframe, I think it is?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So this is just strictly to do, so like the movie detail, that had nothing to do with this? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Any deliberation?
No, I didn't. I mean, everything I heard has been good, so.
All right. Then I will solicit a motion to accept the annual master plan update.
Motion to accept the annual master plan update.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. Thank you. Next up is a discussion on planning commission meeting minutes.
If I can for just a second, do we want to continue doing an annual review or is it burdensome for this permit review?
I think when the field has been completed, we might contemplate. But until the sports court is completed, we should continue to see it annually. It would be my opinion.
Sure.
Okay.
I didn't think it was so burdensome tonight.
No, tonight was easy breezy. Just a comment from Alex, so I was just in lieu of that, making sure that we felt it was necessary.
I think until we close, until there's nothing outstanding that's going on, it makes sense to see it annually.
Okay, great.
All right. So we have a discussion on planning commission meeting minutes. Are we going to YouTube?
Good evening, Chair and members of the planning commission. Tonight, we're bringing forward a discussion regarding the procedural change to the way staff prepare planning commission meeting minutes. As you know, city staff is committed to improving efficiency, accuracy, and cost effectiveness of its administrative processes. To that end, staff is recommending the commission consider and facilitate the use of a new digital tool, Clerk Minutes developed by Hagov. Currently, the responsibility of preparing the meeting minutes is with the secretary of the planning commission, who is, it's a role delegated to one of the few planners we have available in the planning department. Drafting these minutes typically require four to six hours of staff time per meeting, often more when meetings involve complex or contentious topics. And that is primarily due to the level of context and detail that the planning commission has come to expect with the past meetings. This process can delay turnaround, especially when staff must prioritize immediate customer service needs. And in many cases, the minutes are not ready for commission's approval until the week following. So Clerk Minutes is a digital platform that leverages artificial intelligence and audio video recordings to create meeting transcriptions and rough draft minutes in under 10 minutes. The tool has already been successfully used in the city's ad hoc revenue committee and is currently employed in over 265 municipalities across the nation. Staff tested the platform in a mock environment and realized that a 75% reduction in time spent preparing and reviewing the minutes. More importantly, it introduces the opportunity to reduce staff, staffing costs by no longer requiring the planning technician to sit in during the planning commission meeting minutes as those tasks are primarily handled in the A I tool. So to be clear, Clerk Minutes does not eliminate staff involvement. Staff will still research, I'm sorry, review and draft and assign the speaker names. They'll also be maintaining a, make sure that the minutes maintain a professional and impersonal tone and format the minutes according to the structure you've become accustomed to. The city attorney's office has also advised minimizing overly detailed contextual content in the minutes, reinforcing a move toward more streamlined and action-focused minutes. So for the expectation and to ensure the quality of transcriptions, we ask that the commissioners make a conscious effort to speak directly into the microphone as possible, one at a time during discussions. That measure will significantly enhance the transcriptions and clarity. And as, as we were testing this, we noticed that the A I tool does get confused when commissioners speak directly after one another or sometimes over each other. They'll, they'll pick up the first speaker who, who starts. And any speaker following immediately after or, or over will, will be captured as the first speaker. And so, yeah, we do review those kinds of things to make sure that everyone's notes are, or everyone's comments are captured, you know, accurately. So an example of the meeting minutes generated with Clerk Minutes is, based on the April 17th meeting minutes, is included in attachment A of the packet. And you'll notice that it significantly reduces the length of those minutes. And it also captures the very pertinent and importantly, required information that we need to have for state laws in the meeting minutes. And so beginning on page 118 of the meeting packet, you'll see the example of the Clerk Minute output. And it's going to, you're going to see a little bit of restructure in there as well. That, that structure, as far as the items under the call to order, approval, approval of the agenda minutes, or approval of the agenda and approval of the meeting minutes. The voice vote recording is structured based more closely on the way the city council has captured their approvals. And then as far as a discussion is concerned, it captures more of the essence of what the planning commission has gone over, what staff has pointed out. And the goal is to avoid any misrepresentation or a possible risk of misrepresentation that might have been said by either the planning commission or consultant or city staff. So that concludes my report. Staff is happy to answer any questions you have and look forward to your feedback.
When will a video take the place of minutes?
I have not heard of, sorry, my voice is cutting out. I've not heard of anything requiring a video or any changes for it to be a video. I think that A I is being used more broadly for capturing meeting minutes because it can be later edited by a staff member in a pretty easy format. And I think in other contexts, it has worked efficiently. So I would imagine it would do so here as well. But what do you mean in terms of a video replacing?
Well, if we were to have a discussion and it were to go to litigation, nobody's going to use the minutes as the basis for the suit. They're going to watch the video that gets recorded. And so I'm just curious as to why we're even wasting time on minutes if the video turns out to be the definitive litigative technique.
Perhaps in a litigation context, I, you could speculate that. But the legal requirement is just to have the meeting minutes so that they can be later approved by the client, planning commission. So as far as what we're required to do, whether it's useful or not, is a separate matter, but.
Okay.
So it sounds like we, we aren't legally obligated to post the video. Since we do have the video, it would be used legally, but this is what we're legally obligated to post.
Yeah.
As far as I'm aware, that's correct.
And it's also my understanding, like I have done this, you can review past meeting minutes, I feel like. So you can, as a member of the public, use the meeting minutes. And that is, I think, preferable to going through videos.
And they're a lot faster. As somebody who's had to look at videos for litigation, you really don't want to have to do that unless it is a litigation matter. So for somebody who's just curious about what was discussed, I think the meeting minutes are a much more efficient, condensed version.
Yeah. And I think nowadays, like anyone could, with their own A I tool, get many, meeting minutes out. But the value of this is like it's using the A I tool to help. But then it's vetted by city staff, so you know it doesn't have, you know, these confusions that these tools can bring.
Correct.
So this is just a discussion. What do you need from us?
Approval.
The planning commission's simply being asked to accept and be more conscious of, conscious of recording and speaking one at a time when possible. And to simply accept the report, receive and file. If there's any objections, I'm open to hear them and, or otherwise.
And I think it's just good for us to have had this information so that I know personally, sometimes when we nod or make other gestures, so there, there will be things that we'll have to be more cognizant of so that it is recorded for the A I to pick up on.
So this is the appendix A? That's the new one?
Yep.
So it doesn't really have any, like, it's, it's really, I mean, it's a summary, right?
That's correct.
It doesn't have, it doesn't, it's not like the old one. It's, it's like apples and oranges. I mean, there, there's a lot of, you know, a lot more than the other one. If we don't need it.
Our minutes, our minutes used to be even more sparse than the ones that are being shown by A I.
Oh, okay. The, the, I don't, I mean, if I need any, if I miss a meeting, I'm not going to read the minutes. I'm going to watch the video on YouTube. So as far, yeah, I'm fine with this. If this meets all the, what we need to do, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I welcome our A I overlords.
Thank you, commission.
Don't put that in the minutes. Yeah, that's what I, I was instructing.
All right. Next up, I think that we should postpone the presentation until we have a full commission to receive it. So if I can get, do we need a motion to do, to postpone a presentation? I don't think we do.
I don't believe so.
No. All right. So Planning and Community Preservation Department reports.
Chair Dennison, so our next meeting is July 5th, June, sorry, June 5th. And we'll be reviewing the legislative update and also a residential project on South Baldwin. I want to let you know that there is a event this Saturday between 10 and 12 for a Eaton Fire After Action Report. They're soliciting, soliciting feedbacks from the community during the Eaton Fire. Any experience that it's shared will be greatly appreciated. And there is another meeting, similar meeting, next Tuesday from 6 to 8. So there's two sessions. So there's two sessions that we're soliciting feedbacks from anyone that would like to share their experience from the Eaton Fire. That concludes my report.
Did the city council approve the resolutions we put, we recommended they approve on speeding up rebuilding?
Yes. Yes. The urgency ordinance for
The urgency ordinance, thank you.
All the fire impacted properties are approved.
Okay.
And we have. And, and we have already executed a contract with Walden Engineering for a streamlined review.
Great. That's great news. Any planning commissioner reports?
Nope.
Hearing none, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 5th. Thank you.